Just get some feedback. And to present what we are planning to do up at behind Adam's school to fix the tennis courts and put in some pickleball. So we're going to turn it over to you, Rick. And let you introduce Mike again.
Okay. So just, you know, Mike can give his background more, but he also is the one to design the Adams irrigation for us. He did a lot for the town, a lot of different ways and worked with us on a couple of projects and done a great job. And he's been working hard on getting this pickleball court designed. We had test pits that were done. Public Works brought a backhoe out about a week or so ago and did some test pits. So Mike was here working with that. We have got approval from Inland Wetlands last week. And so this is the public information meeting tonight for any of the neighbors. We sent a no doubt about a week ago to all the neighbors, about 30 or so, to let them know about this public information meeting. I had one email, sorry, two. One of them was from the neighbor to the north, just north of the court. He was asking mostly about where the portage lines would go if we have them there. And also were to expand parking, explain to him the parking would be expanded, but away from his house. It'd go toward the tennis course, not in the direction toward his house. He was, he said okay to that in the email. I think I sent a note to all of you from the Greenleaf, so they're just south border of the property. They have some concerns about it, noise mostly, I think. I think you all got that. I believe I forwarded to everybody. Judy Sullivan coming in right now. And there's, and Judith, I forgot her last name, but Judith, I believe lives across the street and she has some interest in this too. So right now, I believe she's the only neighbor on here. We'll let Mike, if you want to talk about the design, Mike, and what the plan is.
Okay. Um, so good evening, everyone. Just for your record, if you're recording this, Rick, I'm Mike, I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill. Land surveyors in Madison. So the town, Rick hired us to do the design for the new tennis court reconstruction and the new pickleball courts. I'm going to share my screen again, if that's okay.
Yeah.
And show you plans. So, so there's a, you know, there's a whole set of plans for this project that we, that we've given to Rick for his review. And it also went to, as Rick said, we submitted to the inland wetlands commission and they approved this last Wednesday night, I believe it was. And the plan is if, if the planning and zoning commission approves it tomorrow evening, we would put it out to bid, advertise it for bidding for construction soon. So I'm going to skip, I'm just going to flip through these if I can. Let me zoom out. And to the, the main plan and I'm going to, I'm going to zoom in. Well, I'll leave it out at the scale for a minute. So I don't know how well this, how good this looks on your screens. On my screen, it's very clear. Is it, is it clear?
Yeah. It's clear to me, I think.
Okay, good. So this is State Street on the right-hand side.
Right.
Stage and north is straight up. And this is the neighbor that Rick was just talking about that lives next to the parking area.
Okay.
Existing parking area. Let me, let me go back one sheet. So here's the, here's the existing condition. So here's the existing parking area.
Okay.
And this is that, that gentleman's house is here, his property is here. And there's a bunch of maple trees along.
Circles, okay.
The common boundary, yeah. And then all these, you probably all know, there's all these nice maple trees along State Street. That's, that's what those circles are. And so this is, this rectangle is the tennis court. If you can, can you all see my cursor when I move it?
Yeah.
You see, okay. So that big rectangle is the tennis court. And this is the hitting wall and the pavement at the hitting wall, if you're familiar with that. There's an inland wetland, this line with dark triangles on it. There's an inland wetland here and there's a storm drain that comes from the street and cuts diagonally across the open lawn. So this is all that, that open lawn where the pickleball courts will be built. And the school is way over here, way out, way out of there. Way to the left, to the west. So then if we go to the proposed plan, and I'll zoom in a little on the parking. So here's the neighbor's property and those maple trees I talked about. This, this light line is the current edge of the parking. And we are, you can see, we're going to expand new parking to the south.
Okay.
Away from this gentleman.
Yeah, good.
To.
And this is Judith. May, may I ask, how many spaces are you including?
So, so in the new, today it's about 14 spaces. In the new configuration, it would be 28 if I've counted them right.
Okay, and the new parking, I would not agree that there are 14 spaces. And this is Judith, I live right across the street. I don't see that there are 14 spaces today.
Well, they're, they're not, they're not straight, Judith, or not marked, but, but actually, if you count them, and I just did this right before the meeting, if you can see my cursor and you see these, these lines, these parped lines. So if you were to go out there today and paint these, you could fit, and I'll count them for you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14. That's the end of the parking today. We are going to expand it one space to the west, which gives us 15 on this side. And then on, and then we're going to expand it about 18 feet to the south and add these spaces, some accessible parking spaces. And so that it'll be a double bay parking area. When you drive in from State Street, you could either turn to the right and park or turn to the left. Typically, I'm trying to think of where there's one like this, but.
So, so Michael, the, the new parking spaces will go, will butt up right against the fencing for the tennis courts then?
No, actually, so what we're doing is, and I'm going to move down just a little, the existing tennis court fence is right here. I'm tracing it now.
Yes.
So we're going to move that about 18 feet. Because we're moving the parking 18 feet, we're going to move the tennis courts down 18 feet. Leave room between the parking and the tennis courts for Rick's guys to get their mowers through.
Oh, so you're putting in new tennis courts. I mean, the proposal is for new tennis courts also.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, it's too.
I didn't realize that, okay.
Yeah, it's too, um.
Larry, they're, they're in such bad shape that it's easier to do that. You know, how, how long can we keep repairing them?
Yeah, no, Rose, I was on the court the other day. Yeah, they're all, they're, the tennis court's in horrible shape. I noticed that.
Yeah, so I think that's our feeling is that we don't want to keep repairing. We might as well just do it right now.
That makes sense.
So we're going to demolish the existing courts, build courts the same size, but just slide them down to the south about 18 feet and build these new pickleball courts also.
Okay, so if, and this is, I'm sorry, this is Judith again. So if I, I, I didn't realize you were demolishing the existing court, which I understand. So, but just regarding the parking, because I live obviously across the street. So are people still going to be able to pull up on the lawn as they do today? Because that's where they pack right now. If there's like a little tournament or something going on, they pull up on the lawn facing the tennis courts.
They, they, we haven't changed that at all, actually. So yes, like I'm here. See this circle right here?
Yeah.
That's a maple tree and that's a maple tree. And, and this distance between the two, they can pull in. Yeah, so we really, we haven't changed that, really.
Okay, I'm just a little concerned. And, you know, I don't know that you, any of you use the tennis courts, but it's, it's a, State Street is a tough street to back out onto. And my concern is obviously the traffic accident kind of thing going on, that's all.
Yeah, so this.
Judith, I'm sorry, can I stop? Judith, do you think that, um, the park, there are obviously parking on the grass because there's not enough room in the parking lot. So if the parking lot is enlarged, we would really hope that they would use the parking lot.
Right, but it's, on one side, it's going to be enlarged by one space, which I still am a little nervous about the number of spaces, but, you know, obviously I can't discuss that. I mean, I'm not going to argue that. But if, if you've been to these little tournaments that they have, which I'm thrilled that they play tennis there, don't get me wrong, it's a lot of people and there will not be enough parking.
So can I address that? Mike, Mike, the amount of parking, Mike, will be about 30 spaces, is that correct?
Twenty, 28, Rick.
Twenty, so Judith, if, if we ran a tournament, the maximum number would be 32 people. So that's if everybody brought their own car, you know, and usually they played 32 because it's going to be eight, it would be eight courts, counting the, you know, the tennis courts and the four new pickleball courts. 32 is the most people, probably not all of them are driving, but now maybe because of social distancing. Once this thing goes away, you know, I don't think everyone's going to come in their own car necessarily. So that'd be 30, almost say 28 spaces for 32 people. So it should accommodate most of that. I think Mike was, the point he was making, if, if there needs to be a little overflow, maybe a few cars end up on the grass like you're saying they do now. We're trying to eliminate that though by having more formalized parking with lines. Because I don't think there are lines out there now. With the lines, as Mike showed, we'll be able to get 20 cars in there.
Yeah, and I, believe me, I'm all for it. I hope it works out. It's just that I live here and I've heard the squeaking brakes when people are trying to pull off that lawn. And, you know, it's just the way it is. So the reality versus what actually happens, you know, I just, it's just a safety thing, that's all.
We could, we can certainly give that, I'm talking to afterwards. I mean, we could put up signs and say, please don't park on the grass. We can encourage people to park over at Adams and walk over. If you, if you could play tennis, you could probably walk over from Adams.
Right, right, right. And it's not that I, like I said, it's not that I, right, don't want them to park there, it's just, um.
It's a safety issue. I understand.
Yeah, that's all.
What you're saying. And I, I think I understand what you're saying. Because they'll just pull in and then they just pull out and it's, it's a lot harder.
It is, because it's just, where it is, it's a bend in each side of the road. So it's just a little scary. And, and obviously, it's not necessarily people that are playing that are obviously always paying attention to who's coming down the road. So that's all.
But I think that's something, I mean, thank you for bringing that up. And I think that's something, when, when we do sit and meet and this is moving along, we can sit and talk about how to handle that.
Okay, that's great. And like I said, I'm, I'm all for it. I love watching the people play out there. It's great. And not trying to put a damper on anything. It's just, it just was a concern.
I understand it. Thank you. Okay.
Hey, Rose, Judith, for Kathy to have in the record, can you give your last name and address, Judith?
Yes, it's Judith Adams. And I'm at 227 State.
Hi Judith Adams, it's Laura Hartman here.
I saw Laura.
I happen to know Judith. I know Judith. She's a completely reasonable, lovely, wonderful person. For the record.
I try to be, not always, but I try to be.
Okay, so let's.
Like I said again, I mean, I think it's great that they're expanding the fields. And I, I know that, I see people waiting and they enjoy playing. It's just, like I said, my concern was just because of the, the issues with them pulling up in the lawn already.
And I think, I think we can address that, so.
Okay, great.
All right, Mike, you're back on.
Okay. So, so that's the parking. By, by the way, no lighting. We are not adding any lighting to the parking, parking area or the courts.
Good.
And then, so then the courts get down, like we were saying. Same size courts. The fencing, hopefully, hopefully you'll like this. The fencing will be black PVC coated chain link fence. The galvanized, you know, the shiny metal that you see today. And the other thing is along these long sides that, that I think Judith, you will look at, the fence will not be 10 feet high. We're only going to make it four feet high. At the corners, at each corner, the fence will be 10 feet high, but then it drops down to four feet. And it's four feet over the majority of its length. And then it goes back up to 10 on the corner. That'll be the same thing on the other side. So it won't look so much like a, you know, a penned in area. We did courts, I don't know if you're, if you're familiar with courts at the country school. We did new tennis courts a few years ago there. And we did the exact same thing. You can see, if you go there, you'll be able to see what it looks like. So the fencing looks a lot better because it's black. And from a distance, when you look at it from a distance, it kind of blends in with the background beyond the courts. So you don't, you don't really see the fence so much. It kind of disappears a little. And especially because we're going to lower it for such a long length. It, it won't, I think the fence will be less obtrusive, I think.
Michael?
Yes.
I wonder, is the, the type of fencing you're using more aesthetically pleasing? Or it doesn't have the same wear and tear factor as the alternative option?
So it's the same, same as the chain fence that's out there today, except it's coated with, with black PVC. So it looks aesthetically, it looks a lot better. And because it's coated, it, it theoretically should last a lot longer also. Trying, I'm trying to think, Rick, where have you used black PVC coated fence in town?
Yeah, we, we have that at the soccer field at Bitter Park.
Oh, go check it out.
Yeah.
Let's see. So then, so then, um, so that's the tennis courts. Again, same size, we're just sliding them down 18 feet to the south. We have to, this storm drain that I mentioned earlier that goes diagonally across the lawn.
Yeah.
We relocate it here. And it's between the two courts, in case we ever have a problem with it. It won't be beneath the court. And this is, this rectangle is the new pickleball courts.
Okay.
And similarly, the same fence, black PVC coated and the same thing, it'll have low sides on it. And that, that is really the project. There's no other, so there's the parking improvements and the two new sets of courts. There's no, no other improvements, no lighting, no sidewalks, no, no water service, no power, no electrical power. And it'll all still, you know, outside the courts will be green lawn still.
And that, that's going to be four pickleball courts?
Yes, four, yep.
Now, Michael, how does, how does people walk from the parking lot to the pickleball courts? I assume there's going to be a sidewalk or something?
Uh, no, actually, no, no sidewalks, just across the lawn as they do today. As they do to get into the, in and out of the tennis courts, the gates on the tennis courts. So there'll be gates on, you know, of course, on, on the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. So people will just walk across, over the grass, over the lawn to enter the courts.
Okay.
We talked about sidewalks, but, but the town didn't want to do them, at least at this time.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yeah.
I think, are there sidewalks on the other side of the street there?
Yes, this is Judith. There are no sidewalks. Yeah, there are no sidewalks on the tennis court side.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is this blue dotted line?
Oh, that is, I'll zoom out a little bit. That is the, that was put on the plans for the inland wetland commission.
Okay.
A hundred foot line offset from the inland wetland boundary, which is here. So the wet, the wetland commission needs to see what act, how, how much activity in that hundred foot area.
All right.
So it's, it's really, again, it's pretty straightforward. It's the.
It is.
Expansion of the parking, demolition of the existing tennis courts, building new tennis courts, moving this pipe and building new pickleball courts.
Yeah, I'm glad to see you put the pipe where it's accessible. Because I know we, Adams has had trouble with flooding in basements when these things have gotten mucked up over there. So that's good.
Yeah, we, we thought, we didn't want to be embarrassed and build the new courts over an old pipe and then have problems.
You know, I can go back years where we had a lot of trouble with flooding basements there, so. It looks good to me. Does it now? Okay, anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, the other thing, as far as the not having a sidewalk, it's, you know, people obviously can be walking from the parking lot to the pickleball courts. And they're going to wear, the path is going to be worn in the grass and it just, it doesn't, it's not going to look well. So it'd be nice if they could, you know, put a sidewalk in from the parking lot to the, to tennis courts. Or to the pickleball courts. That would be my suggestion.
And that's, that's a good suggestion. Like I said, we did talk about them, but I think right, I mean, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong. Right now, it's a budget issue.
Right.
But, but easily, you know, if the town has the funds at some point, easily add it.
Yeah, Laura, so even in the future, if we wanted to just make it even a stone dust path.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like we're going to do a chapinage for the handicap access there. It's a lot less expensive, but I think, you know, Mike's right. So some of this, you know, we go out to bid, we got to see what this is going to come in at. We have the estimate, you know, based on the budget numbers we got, but when we actually go out to bid, we'll see. You know, we'll see what we can do. One thing else I'll just add here, just a reminder, this is going to be the post-tension concrete. It's not going to be asphalt again. If you remember, that's what we did at the Bitter, Skate Park about, what, two and a half years ago.
Right.
It's like a 20 or 25 year warranty against cracking. So we're not going to see any maintenance issues on this court for a very long time.
Yeah. Hey, Michael, another question. From the, not from the fencing of the pickleball courts, but from the actual edge of the pickleball court itself. What's the distance between there and the property line to the south?
The, um, the closest, I'm going to zoom in a little here. The, the closest distance is this corner here.
Yeah.
To the Greenleaf's property boundary is about 38 feet.
Okay.
We, we met, I don't know if, Rick may have mentioned this, but Rick and I met with Rick and Cheryl Greenleaf the other day out here and explained, explained the project to them.
So, so that's, that's the fence line, but to the, to the actual court itself, it's obviously even further.
Uh, that's, that's the closest point, 38.
You're, you're pointing to the fence line. I'm asking about the actual court itself.
You mean where, you mean the play lines where they play?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's another, that's another 10 feet, so 48 feet.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, there's 10 feet between the play line and the fence. There's 10 feet.
Okay, and you were saying you met with the, the Greenleafs?
Uh, Rick and I did, yeah. What day was that, Rick? Friday, right?
Last Friday, yeah.
Last Friday, we met out here on, out in the field, right at the site.
And all that cute little squiggly line, is that like shrubbery down there?
Uh, there's a bunch of, yeah, that's the limit line of trees. There's a bunch of.
Okay, that's, okay, good.
Along, along the Greenleaf's property, there's a whole bunch of spruces, I think they are.
Yeah. So Michael, so Rick, what was, so you had a conversation with the Greenleafs. Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, and so Mike staked out the two corner stakes. Mike, do you want to point those out?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're on the left and the other one on the right. So he staked out so they would see, you know, the proximity to their property of the, the boundary of the courts here. So, you know, it was a very good conversation. They were appreciative that we came out to meet with them. I, I did that because they don't have Zoom capability and they knew they weren't going to be able to be part of this meeting. So, you know, we offered to let them see what we were doing here. Mike brought the plans, we discussed it with them. They, they were pretty good with it, I think. But you saw the email, I believe I sent out. Their concern is noise. I don't think it really, it wasn't a visual issue for them. It was just the sound of pickleball. You know, you hear it now. I don't know, Judith, if that's a problem, if you hear the noise and that bothers you. But they were concerned about that. I mean, there is a, a sound, you know, when the wooden paddle or graphite paddle hits the plastic wall, it's a woof, a woof.
And I think that they're probably, I'm just guessing, but they're probably mostly concerned for after hours. But you made it perfectly clear there's going to be no lights. So I think, you know, that should be fine.
Yeah, and we, I think we told them that. I think they know we're not going to have lights there.
Right.
You know, very congenial. They're, you know, neighborly and they just want to express their, their concern about it. And, you know, we, we, we listen and we forwarded that information to you folks. And I'm sure we should let planning and zoning know that also. And then, you know, we'll have to decide what we're going to do. I don't think there are any real alternatives. It doesn't make sense to look anywhere else for this. This is already an activity that's occurring there now. It's flat. It's, you know, Mike spent a lot of time designing this here. You know, there was a suggestion that some other, somewhere else and a couple of spots that were suggested are, you know, impossible. You know, Pedlar's Park or East River Preserve, that's not, and those are conservation areas. It's not possible to do this there. Or even, you know, Bitter Park would be a real challenge because of the, the ledge up there and trees coming down. And I mean, it's, it'd be a much, much bigger project than what we have to do right here. And it's already an activity that's going on. We're just expanding it.
And this is Judith. I just have one question. And maybe you can answer this, but, you know, I've lived here for very many years. And the kids do play in that corner from Adams Middle School. So I'm guessing that they'll just move closer to the school or?
Yeah, Judith, we set up what are called grids for soccer practice in that area. We've talked to the school system. They're 100% aware of what we're doing here. We had to make sure they were okay with it. They're aware of it. The school principal, the school superintendent, they're aware of what the plans are here. And it's, it's the park to rec crew that puts those grids in. We'll just have to find another spot to swap.
Okay, and that's fine. I mean, I, I'm lucky to enjoy all of it. So it, it'll be sad to see the kids go, but I'm sure they'll probably find another place.
We are thankful that you're such a great neighbor.
Maybe they'll play pickleball.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe they will.
You never know.
Judith, you got to play.
I know, actually, I'm thinking about starting, so we'll see. All right.
We just have Cheryl, or Richard Greenleaf is just joining in. Oh, so they left the meeting. Actually, I admitted, I just admitted them and they left. I'm not sure what happened there.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
Do you see a Cheryl Greenleaf on my screen?
Yeah, I just lost it.
Yeah.
I see her still. Cheryl, can you unmute yourself? There, there she is. Hello, Cheryl?
Hi. I don't have my picture. See.
She's, will she be able to hear us? Cheryl, if you're, if you can hear us, you can unmute yourself if you want to make a comment. I don't think I have a way to do it, right? Doesn't she have to do it herself?
Got to do it. While we're waiting for her, does anybody else have any other questions?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
It's Judy Sullivan.
Yeah.
I had to enter the meeting. Are the, I, I, Rick, I had said, and I'm just double checking, that the pickleball standards are going to be permanent?
I think that'd be the plan, like tennis. Yeah, I mean, do we take the nets out in the winter if they're not being used? But, right, Mike, I think the plan is to make them like the tennis nets, they'd be embedded into the concrete?
Oh, yes, yes. Same, same as tennis court, yep.
And many years setting up pickleball nets. And I'm just, it would be awesome if they were standard. Thank you.
Cheryl, if you can hear us, I don't know if you have any comments you'd like to make. We see you at the meeting. Got to just mute me again.
I don't know if he's hearing us.
Should hear us, right?
Yes, there she is.
There she is, Cheryl.
There you are. Welcome.
Thank you. I've done this with school, with elementary school, with the kids and stuff, so it was, it's okay. But the pickleball court, we, we don't have any problem with it except for the noise.
Right.
Pop. It's like, you know, it's constant. When it was at the tennis court, it was a little faded. But, um, that's...
Will the, will the trees buffer it?
No. No, half the trees are dying. They're been eaten up. We've been spraying them and protecting them and stuff like that, but with a court that's...
Did they, the... Did, did they, did they provide you some, some sound protection when they were big and full and before they were dying?
Yeah, but those trees are huge. They've been there for years and years.
I mean, the best we could do, you know, is try to replace?
No, that won't work.
No.
They're so tall.
We'd have to wait for them to regrow.
Well, I'll be dead by then. Sorry to say. But, um, you know, when the pickleball court was over at the tennis court and they shared it, we could hear, we could hear it, but being thirty feet off our line, that's going to be loud. Four courts, constant. Before they share it with the tennis courts. And I have nothing, nothing against the pickleball court, but I think there might be a couple of places that maybe accommodate it a little bit more, where there's not homes.
Yeah, exactly.
I know neighbors on the, I don't know where they are at night, on the other side of the tennis court by our houses. Our house, a field, the tennis court, and then our neighbors. I can't imagine what they think. It's a big sound. Constantly.
Yeah.
Tennis doesn't make sounds like that.
Oh.
So it's, I mean, it's, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But we don't, we're not against it. We just don't know how it's going to... My husband goes to bed at seven-thirty at night. So in the summertime, tell me, they're not going to be out there playing. He gets up at four o'clock in the morning. That's all.
We could, we could talk about putting a, a time limit on it too. You know, no games after seven, or we could, we could look at that as well.
I know people love it. People my age, I mean, I can't play tennis. I can't go around like that. And I think it's great. But it was up at the Bittner Park, and it's not there anymore. I think Bittner became big enough with skateboard and basketball and soccer and, you know, all that stuff. That it can't fit everything up there.
Right. Right. Well, I appreciate your concern. I, we'll have to think about what we might be able to, I don't know. There's some way we can abate the noise. Michael, is there something we could do?
I, you know, I don't really know. I, I know that I've been told by sound experts on other, or sound engineers on other projects, that vegetation doesn't really work.
Okay.
Yeah, I've been, I'm not a sound person, but I've been, I've listened to them testimony at, at, um, controversial projects, and I've been told that that doesn't work.
Fences work?
Um, actually, tall enough, I, I understand, yes, but, but very tall. Hey, Rick, very, very tall. Yeah. Um, I think just like Miss, like Cheryl was saying, the, the trees that are there probably don't, don't help with the noise, I'm guessing.
Can I ask, Judy, you play pickleball a lot. You've played there a lot. And Rick, certainly you, you could chime in on this. But what is a, it's mostly seniors who play. And what is the more typical time that people are playing?
Well, with the park and rec class, with the park and rec classes running, they're, we're usually out by twelve-thirty. But then again, if people bring their own nets, or they won't have to bring their own nets if they come later in the afternoon. But the, the biggest numbers at one time would be from like eight to twelve.
Okay. And, and have you played there in the late afternoon or evening at all, or, you know, have you experienced?
No. No.
I think in the summer, it would be too hot. Summertime probably is not going to be any play in the afternoon. It's like tennis. You don't see much tennis going on during the heat of the day, or basketball, or anything. It's too hot. Um, but I would think that early morning, as Judy said, or maybe early evening could be. But like you said, Rose, if we put a restriction of some hours, you know, at least weekends maybe or something, then that's something we could do. We'll just put some signs up.
Do people go up, do many people? I mean, I know some. Do we have like, you know, huge crowds that go up there and play off times? When there's not a class or, or tournament, or, you know, whatever going on? Do people just pick up and just go up there?
And this is Judith from across the street. I can say that, that on the weekends and definitely in the evening, when the weather's nice, people do stand outside the tennis court today to wait to get on. So there's no question about that. I'm not, I don't know that everybody needs to have sign in and get a time. Um, but there's no question, people wait to use the courts. And again, in the summer, I would say, you know, after six o'clock when people get home, six-thirty.
Right.
And because there are no lights on that particular court, I would say it's until eight o'clock. But obviously, this, they're there then, yes.
Okay.
Well, is she speaking of the tennis courts?
Yes, she is.
Yes, that's the only, I would agree, the pickleball courts today, they just seem to be in the morning. But when there's an actual court, I mean, I have no idea what's going to happen. But for the tennis courts alone, that, that are there now, there's no question, people are there early evening, waiting to get on when people finish. And I think that everyone kind of polices themselves to stay on maybe for thirty minutes, an hour, but then the next crew goes in.
Because for the pickleball courts, if you put a time on it, there are opportunities elsewhere in town to play pickleball in the evening that aren't going to disturb people.
Do you find that the court, have we ever had trouble up at Bittner with, with, you know, people waiting to use the court? Or being there late, or, or anything like that, that we're aware of?
No. And in that situation, whoever, if they really, really want to play, they have to have their own net. And the same with Guilford Lakes.
Okay.
And the other advantage of Guilford Lakes is that is lit, so.
That's lit.
People can play whatever time the lights are on till two there. But as tennis and pickleball, you know, I guess if it became a problem, we, you know, we, we could schedule certain times and say, you know, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or tennis, you know, the other day's pickleball or something. We could do something to help that situation to, you know, again, if people want to play, play later, that's the place to go. There are lights.
But the numbers will be on the pickleball court in the morning.
In the morning, yeah. More than in the evening. So it may not be quite the problem that we anticipate.
I hope not.
All right, any other comments? Going, going, gone. All right, I guess we can close our meeting.
Thank you so much for sending the letter. I appreciate it. This is Judith to twenty-seven State.
Judith, thank you for your comments. And Cheryl, thank you also, because it really does help us to, to plan. So I appreciate both of you.
Enjoy the evening. Thank you.
Anybody else on the committee? Anybody else have anything at this point?
Not yet.
So Rick, this goes to planning and zoning tomorrow.
Correct. It's on your agenda for tomorrow night.
Okay. Um, all right. I assume you'll be there?
Yeah, Mike and I will be there. Mike will do the same presentation.
Okay.
And we'll be sure, sure to share with them the comments that we have. I, I wrote a couple of notes. I can double check them maybe with Kathy tomorrow. But we'll, we'll make sure, we'll let them know of any of the issues, concerns that people have.
Okay. All right. All right, anyone else? All right, then everybody have a good evening and thank you. And I guess we are formally adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Yeah, welcome.